Hello, we start live now, your worship.
Okay, thank you. If I get counsel to come on screen. Say, welcome everyone, right, to the committee of the whole for this Tuesday, April the sixth. There was no closed session today, so we are calling to order at 6:00 PM. I welcome all of you. I hope you had a great, long weekend. As we go into the meeting, this is a virtual meeting as we've gotten used to if any member loses connection during the course of the meeting. We will pause for a moment to allow that member to reconnect. And if after five minutes they have not been able to connect, we will continue on assuming we still have have coral. With that, as I say, that we are called to order, we have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or amendments to the agenda presented? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? I'll take the deputy and council town in. Thank you. Any comments? Call the question, all those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? I'm seeing none. That we can move into the agenda. One and only item on our agenda tonight out of 4.1, the draft renewable energy fund grant policy. We have a report before us with the recommendation. The report is from the corporate services department, but it's also from the renewable energy vibrancy. Fund advisory committee. I'd like to thank that committee for their work in in preparing this and the work over quite a while to get this to the stage it's at right now. Would someone like to present on this or we going into questions? The clerk? Oh.
The deputy clerk. Good evening. So I have a PowerPoint. I can share my screen here if you just give me a second. Is everyone seeing the PowerPoint?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Others, I'm seeing odds. Go ahead.
Okay. So the purpose of the report in the presentation tonight is to present to committee of the whole the renewable energy fund grant policy. This is a draft policy the committee has been working on. So just a bit of background about the committee and where they're at. So the committee was established in 2019. Their mandate under the terms of reference is to make recommendations to council regarding the structure and methodology for the distribution of vibrancy funds received from renewable energy projects. So the committee brought a policy proposal to the February 10th, 2020 regular council meeting. For councils consideration, this was deferred to a March 2nd, 2020 committee of the whole meeting, where the following comments were provided to the vibrancy committee. So the committee of the whole recommended that the name of the funding streams be changed for clarity. So there was two funding streams. The amount of funds set aside be increased to ensure funds in perpetuity. Application process includes submissions available twice a year. And that the advisory committee review and make recommendations to council, council would approve applications. No timelines on policy review and consider multi-year commitments to fund projects. And then there was the comment brought up about allocating the first five years of funding to Amherst Island. So in one of the agreements with the solar project, it stipulates that funds be used in the within the project area. And then with electric, there was no stipulations for using the funds within the first five years. So the some of the policy highlights here, I'm going to go over tonight. So there's the funding program. So to ensure the longevity and effectiveness of the renewable energy funds. The annual contributions from wind electric and Kingston Solar LP. Sorry, GP shall be allocated as follows. So the committee in the policy is recommending 25% of the funds to be put into a reserve for future use. 15% of the funds will be used for community grant funding stream. And 60% of the funds would be used for renewable energy benefit funding stream. So the community grant would be for smaller projects, community based events such as parades or music festivals, those types of things. The renewable energy benefit funding stream would be used for more more so projects that are capital in nature. So then within the policy, they've put in from the community benefit agreement with wind electric. Equivalent value of the first five years of funds received over a 20 year period shall be used for community betterment purposes on Amherst Island until the equivalent of the first five years allotment is used. So the prior recommendation brought forward back in March 2020 was that the first five years be allocated to Amherst Island. So this is spreading it out. And then from the community vibrancy fund agreement with Kingston Solar GP. As per section 5.2, the municipality shall ensure the majority of the vibrancy fund for the equivalent of the first five years of the terms of the agreement will be used to fund betterment projects in the community within the project area, which is identified in Schedule A of their agreement. So the funding program, so there's the reserve fund. So 25% of the funds will go into a reserve. The use of the monies in the reserve fund will be determined both after 20 years of the agreements and when funding for both agreements ceases. For the community grant stream, as I mentioned, it would be 15% of the total funding from the previous year from the community benefit and the community vibrancy fund agreement. It would be organizations would be eligible to receive $5,000 per organization or 75% of expenditures, whichever is less. Organizations could also apply for $2,500 for in-kind support and loan of municipal equipment. Request for funds under the community grant fund must fall under one of the following categories, which are identified below here. So the renewable energy benefit fund stream. This is the where 60% of the total funding would be allocated to this stream. Organizations would be eligible to receive $75,000 per organization or 50% of expenditures, whichever is less. Then we have the list of eligible categories. Multi-year projects are eligible to receive up to $75,000 per year for up to three years. Multi-year funding projects would be considered on a case by case scenario. So applications for funding would be available twice a year. The committee would review applications and provide recommendations to council and council would be the approval. All grant applications, all grant applicants applicants would be required to submit a grant application, which is attached to the policy presented tonight. Section four of the policy sets out the eligibility requirements and guidelines. I didn't provide a high level overview of those just because they are pretty detailed. And there's quite a few of them. And then section five of the policy sets of the policy sets out accountability and obligations upon receiving a grant. The vibrancy committee is currently working on a project evaluation slash reporting out form to be completed by grant recipients. And a memorandum of understanding or some sort of an agreement for those who receive a grant. So as of December 31st, 2020, this is the financial status of the renewable energy benefits that the township has received. So it's separated here. The community vibrancy funds, so that's the solar project. And then the community benefit fund, which is the funds from wind electric. These are the ending balances as of December 31st, 2020, and the total of the funds combined. So this will just give council an idea of how much funding that would look like per year. So this is based on 2020 numbers. There will be a little bit of fluctuation as the funds. It depends how much funding we receive each year that can change a bit. So for the community grant fund. Total funding would be about $95,000. So that would be split up over two application periods within a year. For reserves, 25%, 158 would go into reserve each year. And then the renewable energy benefit fund at 60%. It would you would be looking at $380,000 per year for which would be spread out over two application periods. And that is the end. I'll just stop sharing. And I believe sorry, I was just gonna say, I believe the deputy mayor will answer any direct questions and I can assist if needed, as he's the chair of the committee.
Thank you very much, Ms. People. Good presentation. And I was going to turn to the deputy as as the chair of the committee if he had comments or additional information to provide to council at this time. Deputy Hagedorn, can you hear? And do you have any further comments?
Oh, sorry. I know Brandy summed it up quite well there. I think, I guess, just through the meetings we've had, the committee has had a lot of discussion on these points. We did, as you know, from the first time it came to council. We did glean as much information as we could from other municipalities that are in the same situation we are and use that as a basis to get started and then tailored it to our situation here. And the committee's had a great a lot of discussion. There's been times I somewhat played the devil's advocate because just to make sure that all points are being looked at, you know, anything that we can think of. And they've come to the conclusions that they have with this here. I think it's a good. If I think it's a very good launching point for this to get started. Our goal is that we are still going to be able to meet timelines to be able to have money awarded this year. There's, and so we have another meeting Thursday, yeah, Thursday night to move ahead with it and hopefully within. I'm expecting that within about two more meetings, we should have the remainder wrapped up and be able to be presented back to council with the full package. So unless there's major deviations in what's presented tonight. We definitely should be able to have it out to the public to receive applications for fall funding. And we'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll answer whatever questions I can with the assistance of our deputy clerk, of course.
Thank you. And again, appreciate the work you did with this council. Do we have questions? I think I saw council porters hand up earlier. Go ahead, Council Porter.
Yes, thanks very much, Jim, and for the, for the information and for sitting on this committee. And just a quick question, item 3.3, it says the majority of the community vibrancy fund for the equivalent of the first five years. The majority meaning over 50% or is there like, how do we know? How are we defining majority?
Sorry, that's in the policy, you said?
Yeah, it just says the majority of the fun. So some people might think, oh, majority means over 50% of the funds. And some might say, well, no, majority isn't more 90% of the funds like you. That's you can interpret that any way you choose to, right? I'm just wondering if that should be clarified or.
Was it 3.5? What? Sorry, what was it in the policy?
Yeah, 3.3.
And I believe that language is derived from the agreement with Kingston Solar, isn't it?
Yes, basically, we just quoted the we brought it out of the agreement with the township between the township and Samsung. I believe the deputy clerk had his, or sorry, the deputy treasurer had his hand up to that might be able to shed a little more information.
Yeah, that's the line. That's the language right out of the agreement. I would interpret that as in the, we get about 105,000 a year from the solar. So I would interpret that that at least 260,000 of the first 520 would need to be spent in that area. That that's the the first five years is the equivalent of about 525,000 under that agreement.
So you're basically saying like around 50%, that at least 50%.
At least 50% of the first five years is how I would interpret that. Majority.
And if I may just follow up. If I remember correctly, this is going into some long term memory. If I remember correctly, when that agreement was struck with the township. At first, they, it was very narrow. What what the project had presented to council was a very, very tight area and basically like 100% of it had to go in that area and it was broadened because if, if there weren't enough, the feeling was we have to be, we want to be able to make sure that this money is a benefit to the municipality. But you always want to take into account the people that are most affected. So they wanted to keep, make sure that a good portion of the funds did go to the area in schedule one of the Samsung agreement. But they didn't want to tie it so tight that if that year there weren't any projects that were justifiable for the funding, the money didn't just sit there, that it could be used other places and the next year there could be catch up. If so, if I can remember correctly from a while ago, that was the thing thought process at the time of the agreement with Samsung.
Thank you, Council Porter. Any follow up?
Yeah, no, I just, I just thought I would raise that just to see what people thought. It says what a majority, what the word majority meant, right? Because it can mean different things to different people. But also with Schedule A in this reporter, could you, could I get a, it's been a long time since we saw this agreement and I cannot remember.
To the deputy clerk, would we have that available to share?
I'll try and pull it up right now. I'll take a quick look here.
Thank you.
It's, it's actually quite a big area. Takes in all of Odessa, almost a Taylor kid, if I remember correctly, but.
Yeah, I was thinking that, but I couldn't remember for sure.
Mr. Frank, Mr. Renia, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe it's basically north of pretty much from the County Road 6 garage north up pretty much. So pretty much Odessa, Wilton, anything north of the 41 would be covered in the area.
Okay, in general terms.
401, that would not include Odessa then, right? Like, are you saying Odessa and north or north?
No, Odessa and north of the 41, basically north of County Road 6 garage, pretty much north of there is the catchment area. It's a pretty wide area.
So so north of Kaden Road, basically.
Yeah, basically, north of Kaden Road is the area would be covered.
Okay, I think we can accept that right now in general terms. And if the deputy clerk can pull it up, we can, we can take a look when when she can find it. So thank you, Council Porter. Do you have any further questions? No? Okay, I'll go to other members of council. Council Booter, go ahead.
Just following up on Council Porter thoughts of a majority. Obviously, is there a way that we can also put a top end on that just for language? So we have a better understanding of it, just so majority could also mean 99%. So I mean, just having that language there would have solid determination for anyone on the committee or council going forward years, years and on. That's all. Just my thought.
Thank you. And other comments or questions? I'll go to Council Parks.
Sir, sorry, I have a few and I'm not really sure who to direct them to. It's more to do with the 25% or the equivalent of 25% of the fund over the 20 years to be earmarked for projects on the island. So I'm looking for some information on things like, and maybe this is for the deputy treasurer, it could be for the CAO in regards to the project that was done for the wind electric. Were there any upgrades that were done outside of this funding stream that is coming forward from that work that was done on the island as?
Mr. Silver?
Yes, I'm aware of some road work that there is some road commitment as well. I'll let Mr. Renia speak to this.
Okay, thank you.
Silver, I'm sorry. Just getting my daughter's dance class up. Outside of the project, there's about, if you look at our 2019 financial statements, there was about 13.3 million dollars. What we call developer donated assets, which was wind electrics work on the island. So out of that 13.3 million, about 12.9 of that was roadwork and the rest of it was culverts. So there was that. And the other item outside of this agreement. There is $75,000 a year as part of a road use agreement, which we do keep in a separate reserve as well. Basically for road maintenance or projects on Amherst Island.
Council Park, does that answer your question?
Yes, that's first one. A few more. The legal bills that were incurred for the this whole project and the council, or sorry, the township being involved in kind of be in the, in the middle of between the residents on the island and wind electric. Those I assume were paid, the majority of them were paid by the township.
Yes, that that would be correct.
Does anybody have a rough idea what those was legal costs were?
From 20, I can answer that, I guess. From 2017, 18, it was about overall between Okonkwo Power Project and Wind Electric would be in the ballpark of 150,000 overall. Some of that is was recoverable, about 40 to 50,000 of that was probably recoverable and the other 100,000 would be more arbitration legal costs.
Thank you.
Ballpark.
And I just, if I can follow up, please. This would be probably for the CAO. Is there any legal requirement? And I believe the deputy clerk spoke to this, that there is no legal requirement in the agreement with wind electric that requires the money to be earmarks for Amherst Island. I understand that the solar power contract or agreement did specify that. But there's nothing in the wind electric agreement for those funds to go to Amherst Island.
To my knowledge, there's nothing similar in the wind electric agreement as to the sword agreement.
Can I follow up on that?
Please go ahead.
Was there a reason why that language was changed, I guess, from the one agreement to the other? Is it just because we're trying to again amalgamate the whole township as a as a whole entity as opposed to individual areas?
It preceded me, your worship, so someone else would have to answer that question.
Okay, and council, council town in, is this a point of order? Or just a question? And okay, then I'll go to, I'll continue with Council Parks and I'll come back to you.
So, okay, that was proceeded. I just, can anybody else that was on council at that time speak to that matter?
And Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, those discussions were closed session.
Okay.
And so I believe we would, I would, I think we should go into closed session if we want to discuss them.
Okay, sorry, I didn't think of that.
Okay, at this time I will call on Council Town in.
Yeah, I can say to Councilor Parks that the agreement that was proposed before it went into closed session had Amherst Island specifically named in it. And when it came out of closed session, it didn't. So to counselor, to Deputy Mayor Hagedorn's point, if they want to discuss what actually happened in the meeting, we need to go into closed session, but it was named in the draft agreement before and when it came out of clothes, it was.
Thank you. It does help to clarify these, the situation for Council Parks. Did you have any further questions, Council Parks?
Just one more, please. And I think this is probably for the deputy treasurer. The assessments for Amherst Island for taxes would amount to approximately how much to have that number?
The like the amount of tax.
What, what is the relevance of that?
Council town in, Council town in, please. And Council Parks, go ahead.
I think
And okay.
Mr. Renee had the information.
The amount of tax levy raised for 2021 would be about approximately 810,000 out of the still over 18 million tax levy. I don't have the actual total assessment value, but that's the tax levy raised.
Thank you. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Council Parks. Council town in would like to speak.
I'm just not sure of the relevance of that line of questioning. We're not talking about the, the operation budget for the entire municipality. We're talking about a community benefit agreement about that includes the largest of that, that benefit agreement, the largest project happened on Amherst Island. And all of the turbines from that project are on Amherst Island and the benefit agreement that be the initial stages had Amherst Island specifically mandated to receive a set portion of the money and council had that removed for reasons that we can't discuss because it happened in closed session. And I'm just not sure why Councilor Parks is on a systematic mission to try and avoid Amherst Island getting what it's due.
I'd be happy to speak to that.
First of all, I will, I will comment that questions of council to staff are relevant in any way, shape or form. Right? I will not speak to the intention or the motivation of any member of council. And Council Town, would you consider that a question to Council Parks? Council Parks, if you would like to answer that, go ahead.
Yes, we all represent every taxpayer in this, in this township as a whole. And I find it very disheartening that if we're trying to continue to amalgamate this township and not have this segregation between the mainland, the Ireland, the islanders, Bath, Odessa and Amherstview, that funds that are due to the township are being segregated for one particular entity.
Thank you. Council Town, do you have further question?
I do. I, I, I find that in Councilor Parks's line of argumentation in citing what she has from the deputy treasurer, she's actually proven my point. Which is that consistently the island would never get the kind of funding to improve because it represents a small portion of the township. So here, council is presented with the opportunity to improve the lives of the taxpayers on Amherst Island with a funding stream that they are due, in my opinion, but nevertheless, they are, they have the opportunity to have a funding stream that can improve life on the island without burdening the rest of the tax base in the rest of the township. And we're not talking about the whole 20 years of the agreement. We're talking about the first five years. A difference that it could make to the island requires some forward thinking. A difference that it could make to the island requires some forward thinking and some, some imagination that I think ironically is, is lacking in the comments that Councilor Parks is making. And I, I feel that she's actually confirming the divisions that exist within the township between wards because she's gone out of her way to try and explain why Amber Silent doesn't deserve any money.
Thank you, Councilor Townend. And I will go to Councilor Parks. This is committee of the whole.
Yes, I appreciate the fact that, uh, Councilor Townend is very passionate about this. Uh, but I'm also passionate about making sure that the fund is, is split between the whole township. Um, again, I, I don't necessarily agree with your point of view. I don't agree that I'm in the process of trying to confirm what you're trying to put forward also. What I'm trying to determine is whether or not this is something that's fair and equitable to every taxpayer in this township, and I don't believe it is.
And does any other member of council have question or comment? I'll go to the deputy first, I do see you, Councilor Townend.
If, if I may speak on behalf of the committee, when the thought, a little bit of the thought process behind this, um, and, and take all the, take everything else out and just since we're looking at the policy, I'll speak on behalf of the committee and the thought process there. Nowhere during the discussion, um, did any of this conversation come into it because we were looking at the funding alone and not burdening the taxpayers with community benefit projects. So that was sort of a basis for us. We didn't go back into pre-amalgamation and everything, and and if it did start to go that way, we kind of steered back away from it because we were dealing with the agreements with the, with the, uh, the power generation companies and the township. Um, and going back to the solar project, it was worded the way it was for a reason, and I kind of already stated that, that there wasn't, it didn't specifically say all five years had to go into a certain area in case it couldn't be spent. But they did want to see the most, and the way they worded it was the greatest impact area to receive benefits from the funding. So when you take that thought process and take it over to the turbine project, the most impacted area in the township is Amherst Island. I know that they're visible, and people don't like that, some people don't like it on the mainland, some do, they see it a basically an engineering feat. Others don't, but the area that was impacted both during construction will be during post-use and, um, decommissioning, and also during the project, the lifespan of the project is the island itself. They were the ones that endured the, uh, the construction. And I mean, I went over and drove the roads during the construction project, and yes, culverts were replaced and geofabric was placed in the road to try and hold it together, but the islanders did, I tore the exhaust off my van. I didn't take the car, thankfully, I had the van, but I still tore the exhaust off the fan, off the van on a township road during the construction project. And I only endured that for an evening while I was over for a function. So when, I guess I was keeping all of those things in mind as well during the discussion of the committee. That there's, there are individuals that are being compensated every year for having the turbines on their property. Good for them. Every farmer, if they do it right, gets compensated for the land that they own and that they work. Um, if you're lucky, it is farming, but I the rest of the, the rest of the island does not, they endure the traffic, they endure the traffic control, they endure the, um, extra truck traffic. And in reality, the road use agreement and, and the other things were brought in earlier. The reason that those were there was to help try to offset the impacts. Because even the company itself that did the project and is running it and making a profit off the project realized and acknowledged that the local traffic, the local residents were going to be impacted. So I'm not defending one side or the other, I'm giving the thought, thought process of the committee, and, uh, it can be open for discussion.
Thank you, Council, Councilor Townend, I was, I recognize you next.
No, I appreciate the deputy mayor's comments, I think his sentiments cover some of what I would have sought to inject into the conversation.
Thank you, other members of council. Councilor Porter, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate Councilor Parks' questions, I think they're important questions, and, and everything needs to be talked about, and everything needs to be on the table, and no one should be, uh, belittled or, uh, or yelled at for, uh, bringing their point of view to this table. That's what makes it a great council, that everybody has differing points of view, and everybody has an opinion, and we need to respect each other's opinions, no matter if we disagree or agree. Um, I think there is a little bit of an elephant in the room that there was prior discussion that we're not allowed to discuss, and right now, uh, that did occur in closed session, and, uh, I think that that may be unfair to some of the members that were, did not participate in that, uh, in that closed session meeting, and I, I think it might be worthy to to go into closed at some point, I, I know we can't do that tonight, but, um, to talk about some of those issues, and, uh, but I think, I think they're all, uh, the questions raised and, and, uh, the deputy mayor's points and Councilor Townend's points that are all very valid, but so are, so are Councilor Parks' remarks are all very valid. And, uh, I think to have a thorough discussion, we have to be open to hear all sides from everybody.
Thank you, Councilor Porter. Other comments? And actually, before I come back to you, Councilor Parks, if I may, I'm going to throw in a couple of comments. Mine are actually less on the principles involved and more on, on some of the, I'll say, the specific details at this point. Uh, I had noted, uh, back a year plus ago, we, uh, sent this, uh, report back to the committee, uh, asking for some adjustments to the names, I'll be honest, I don't, didn't go back and look, uh, but, um, oh, uh, to, to see what the originally suggested names were. Um, but as I was reading the, the policy, uh, I kept on reading renewable energy benefit funding stream as if it was about renewable energy. And I think from the, the rest of the documentation, it's clear that it's not. But I'm wondering if we could, and again, I don't know what the thought processes around the naming discussion happened in the committee, uh, but if we could include maybe the word capital in that or something to that effect, to show that it's not specifically about renewable energy projects, that's the source of the funding, that's why that name is there. It's about community betterment, which we've already used community grant, so I understand there's a challenge in coming up with a name. But if I may, uh, uh, ask the deputy mayor, uh, about that discussion and about a possibility of including a term to represent the larger projects, which is, I think, the intention of, of that fund.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to it for, again, it's a memory thing. Um, when we named, renamed this one, um, instead of, I guess what we were looking at was sort of the source of the income rather than the expense of the income. Um, so it's a, it came from renewable energy, so it came, so that's part of why it was named that way. And we, we looked at, there was some discussion about going with like a simply just going capital and operations. But the boundaries are somewhat blurred on some of the, of the, of the items. And so if we went that way, we may exclude some potential organizations for funding. So that's why we tried to keep them, so we went with where the money came from and not where it was going with the renewable energy. Having said that, a lot of, there are items that are directly related to, shall we say, green projects, like the energy sustainability, land stewardship, like all of those can be go, you know, in the grant, in the larger envelope of, um, I, you know, land stewardship can be, um, helping, uh, get away from, uh, the carbon footprint and, and the impacts that way. Um, recreation projects, it's not really a green and green project, but it's funded by the green project, and it's a benefit to the community. So that's where our thought process was with the naming.
More about the source than about the, the
Yeah.
final outcome.
Yeah, it was, it was a little bit of a yeah, just acknowledging the source.
Okay. Thank you, uh, secondary question, further down in the policy, it talks about the eligibility. And, and it describes that, uh, trying to find the exact wording. It is, uh, it was community groups and organizations, I think was the phrase, I'm not seeing it right in front of me. Um, oh, item four point three, applicants except for elementary and secondary schools must be community groups and organizations. Uh, is it the intent that those be formal, that must be formally organized, not, not-for-profit organizations? Um, you know, I, I noticed further on that it talks about the executive of the organization in the application process. I'm just looking for clarity on what I'll say formality of organization that the committee was looking for.
Perf We went all over on this. Um, because there are some organizations that are very small, they don't really have a structure, but they're very effective in the community. So we didn't want to rule them out. However, if we didn't want to leave it so wide open that just somebody with a wild idea was able, you know, would argue to get funding when the, the plan wasn't truly thought out. And so that's where we were trying to say, um, yeah, we did use the terms like what you were saying, um, community groups and organization. Remembering that there are community groups in the area that are completely volunteer.
Yeah.
The structure is there's, you know, they might call them the president, but they're basically the one that has been there the longest, and there's a bunch of volunteers, and that's okay. That might be their structure. We're more concerned with the plan. We, we want to make sure that the structure is there enough to be able to utilize the funds, administer the funds, and be able to respond back to the municipality with the benefit of what the funds did. Um, and that was really our critical point. We didn't care that they had an office somewhere on a tenth story, and they had a board of directors, that wasn't their plan on that one.
Thank you, and I, I think I understood that, I guess my, my, my follow-up then will be to staff. Uh, it'll be staff that is, it will, you know, for municipal transparency and accountability, it will be staff that will be initially reviewing these application processes, having to write the checks, things of that nature, and we need to make sure that we have a clear documented path that our staff can follow. And I just want to check with staff to see, and I'll, I'll go to the C A O and possibly he can direct it where he wants to. Uh, is that a clear enough definition for us to work with these groups and not fall afoul of any of those transparency rules?
Uh, I think your worship, that staff would need to draft something to come back, so uh, there isn't a lot of clarity right now, so I think we would need to put our interpretation of the rules or the guidelines that we would follow when making that decision so that it's, everybody's on the same page, I think, at the end of the day.
I think that's very important, thank you. And Deputy Comment, I'm at.
If I may follow up on that.
Please.
The meeting Thursday night is actually a memorandum, like, it's going to have a memorandum of understanding, um, or the agreement that has to be signed, so we're although we're trying to keep it available to local groups and not keep, keep it as open as we can, I guess is the best way to put it. We still want to have enough documentation that we can, we know that the, the organization is for real, there'll be a signing body from the organization. Um, so that's the next steps that I've said will eventually be coming to council again. Um, and I'm trying to think of it, there's, and, and I, the deputy clerk may have to help me here with the terminology, but there was a memorandum of understanding and agreement and oh, the evaluation process for the application itself, that's what we're going to be looking at Thursday night, so that we can keep that in mind when, when we're doing that. And that will have a lot of staff input, because let's face it, memorandum of understanding and agreements, that's pretty technical stuff.
Absolutely.
That's above me.
Yeah. I'll go to the deputy clerk for comment.
Um, I was just going to highlight too, within the application, there are, we do require like the organization's, um, budget for the year. Um, they need to outline how much they're going to need, where it's going to be going, so it is pretty detailed within the application, and we'll kind of give the committee and council an idea of how well-structured an organization is.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually have one more question about the details of the, of the wording of the policy. Um, and I'm trying to find it. It was what I'm going to say was the, the council out clause. Uh, there is a clause somewhere here, and I, I'm attempting to find it, uh, that
We're
Sorry?
Four point one six?
Four point one six.
There was one of them.
Uh, council may grant special consideration, yes, that is the one I was thinking about, right, and I'm wondering council is the final approval authority on, on all of these, of course, and, and the committee will make recommendations to council with regard to it. But if council may grant special consideration, I guess my question would be, how would you see council receiving an application that didn't fit the application processes that have been laid out?
And I don't know if staff would be better to answer that, but I will, I'll give my thoughts on it. Typically, when we get a staff report that comes to council, um, I am like, I envision that it would have a summary of the applicants, and then the preferred applicants would be the ones that would be in the recommendation. Um, so all information would be available to council, and there's also always the opportunity for people to approach council as a delegation, um, and sort of make their appeal of why they should be considered. This, the flip side to that is, is if the committee is recommending the applicants and have maxed out the funding for that term, then if council changes that, they will have to decide, also decide who else does not get funding. So it's, it's going to be a, it would be a double-edged sword, that decision.
Absolutely, it could be some tough decisions for council, but thank you for that clarity on that. I will come back to council, though, those are the end of my questions with regard to the, the policy presented. And council, I'll go back to Councilor Parks.
Hi, I just wanted to make two quick comments, um, one was, I, I'm not trying to, um, negate what the residents on Amherst Island went through, through this project, I, that's certainly not my intent. Uh, my concern, the second point is that my concern is we're earmarking a substantial amount of money for the island, specifically for the island's use, um, when it should be, in my opinion, earmarked for the whole township because there are other things too that need to be done in the communities.
Thank you, Councilor Parks, other comments? And Councilor Porter, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question for, uh, the deputy mayor. Um, four point one four, um, can you just explain the rationale for excluding like recreational sports groups? Like what, what the thinking was behind that?
Typically, they've got other funding sources, um, and what we were, part of our thought process when we were, um, coming up with the greater umbrella of trying to figure out how we want this to roll out in the township was, um, and, and I believe in the policy, and I can't, it'd take me a minute to find it, but we, we already say, um, we we want this to be for, it, it's also for everybody in the township, and in there we do say, if it's exclusive memberships, then they don't qualify either. And so you could take a minor, like a sports, and, but it does say, uh, minor sports, I believe, is the exception. So when you get to the minor sports where it's more of a community-based, but when you get up to the higher athletes where they're already, um, they're already funded, um, they've got it's sort of it's more, it, it's really hard to argue then that it's a, a whole community benefit. Um, they may draw, you may be able to say it draws a tourist, if, if the function, if there was a competition in the township, it, it would definitely draw tourism in, so that would be a benefit. But then you're trying to balance you're trying to balance that with, you know, a community group that wants to, in the past, we've had community groups um, partner with us for developing, um, um, the recreation, the, the parks and, uh, different things like that. And when you look at the two of them, you're looking at what is the bigger benefit for the overall municipality and for the residents of the, of the municipality. So that was our kind of, a lot of our thought process on that.
So, okay councillor Porter?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And we have a draft policy before us. And the, uh, the recommendation is for council to provide comment. And I just go back and double check exactly what that says, but it's basically to provide comment to the committee as they go back. Uh, I believe, uh, deputy said the meeting again on Thursday. Yeah. Um, would we like to formalize the comments from this? Anyone want to put forward a motion? To the deputy.
I wasn't going to because I'm on the committee, but um, I've moved to receive the report and have, have the, uh, the, uh, policy and the application come to council for approval.
I'll take that motion. Councillor Tannen, you're seconding? Okay. And mover, do you want to make, make comment?
I may be a little biased, but I, I think it's a good, like I said, I think it's a good launching point. I really foresee probably revisions or, or reviews done on this in the near future. Once we get a couple of applications under our belt, um, we'll know if we missed anything or not, or if we need to tweak it. And, uh, by all means it should be. Um, but unless somebody has glaring issues that they definitely want changed. Um, I think it's, I think it's a really good starting point. Um, and my other thought is, the, the committee has gone through this a lot. They've really had good discussions and this this is the unanimous policy of all the committee members. So to try and send it back to the committee and say, change this. If we want to change, council might as well just change it because the committee already really, they, this is what the committee feels is best for the community.
Thank you. Second or comment?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Um, I echo the deputy mayor's comments and I thank the committee for all its work. Um, and this has been a very long process, um, and a long time in coming. Uh, I think, I think the policy is great for all the reasons that, uh, that the deputy mayor expressed. Um, and, and I can say as, as the representative for Ward One, that, you know, islanders are behind this, they've read it. Um, they're watching, uh, they, they are, are behind this policy. Um, I think in particular respect to, uh, the aspects of, of the policy that reference Amherst Island. Uh, I, I continue to stand by my comments that, that this provides council with an opportunity to think long into the future. Uh, for the investment, uh, of Amherst Island in ways that it would otherwise, uh, not be afforded and uh, you know, council just recently purchased, um, some pretty serious real estate in the village of Stella. Um, precisely because it's, it's, it's got a vision, um, for what it can do for the island. And this, this uh, this community benefit agreement, um, and the apportionment that the draft policy recommends uh, will go very, very far, uh, on the island. And, uh, and I, I really thank the committee for, for its work. And I, and I really hope that council approves it in the end.
Thank you. Other comments? I'll go to councillor Parks.
Um, I also want to thank the committee and the deputy mayor. And, uh, I think the deputy clerk was involved in, in this committee also, uh, for the work that's been put forward through this. I think the basis of the policy is very good. Um, I just will not support it based on the fact that it's still going to have that twenty five, uh, sorry, that equivalent of the five year funding for the, uh, to be allotted to Amherst Island. I think it needs to be open. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion, um, that's on the table right now. I think there is, um, several good comments made. Comments from the mayor, comments from other council members about the policy that should be addressed prior to bringing it back to council for approval. So, um, what was the point of tonight if our comments are just going by the wayside?
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none. And again, this is committee of the whole. I will, uh, add mine in that. And I'm going to venture into, to two different areas. First off, I would encourage council to, if you wish to make amendments to the motion, if you uh, have, uh, ideas that, you know, could be improved, uh, then please speak them as motions so that we can get them on the floor. We can take, we, we have a motion on the floor, but we can take amendments to the motion if that is your desire. Uh, as far as the, I'll say the, the elephant in the room. The, the point of disagreement that is presented here today. I agree. Council several years ago worked very hard. Uh, and again, we can't discuss some of the details here, but worked very hard to ensure that we got the best deal we could possibly get for the township and, and for the people immediately adjacent these projects, both uh, the solar projects and the wind projects. Right? Uh, and from everything I've been told, uh, from other municipalities across the, the province, we actually did very, very well. So we have a bonus. We have a benefit. And it's called a benefit specifically, uh, available to us, available to the township. That we would not have otherwise had. And I think that is the most important feature here. There's a lot of money on the table. And, and that money will benefit the township. Right? I was tempted to correct and I, I, I always hesitate to correct a member of council. Uh, but councillor Tannen made the comment just a few moments ago that we recently purchased property for the benefit of Stella. Now, we recently, recently purchased property in Stella for the benefit of all of Loyalist Township. Because Stella is an important part of Loyalist Township. Uh, but to that end, I certainly understand that those living, I'll say, uh, out Mud Lake Road were specifically affected. Those living on the island were specifically affected, especially during the construction. I personally think that the, uh, the, the recommendation provides a, a reasonable balance is, is my thought on that. But, uh, it will be up to council to make the final decision on this, of course. Right? So with that, uh, maybe we can make some, some small amendments. I'm not going to step into the chair to ask them to change the name of the, the, uh, I already forgotten it. The renewable energy benefit funding stream. I'd like to see a change to that to include something, but I understand the deputy mayor's explanation of what the committee, uh, meant. Uh, but if, if council wishes to, to make those kinds of comments, those types of changes, an amendment would be in order. And I look to council for their comments if, and I'll go to councillor Biderick.
Um, so when I first got on council, we talked about how amazing the opportunity that committee of the whole would be because it gives us an opportunity to discuss things. Um, and, and we've got, and, and we can very easily see that there's a line drawn in the sand with councillors, uh, one way or the other. Why don't we take this as an opportunity to discuss it, to get through our issues, to come to an agreement where we can all agree on what it could be? I'm going to say right now, I, I'm looking at, like, for example, on our agenda for the meeting, uh, two days from now that the deputy talked about, the item on there. I want to make sure that we get this right tonight because if it isn't done right tonight, the meeting they have two nights from now might go off the rails. And when it comes back to council, it could go in a far more negative manner. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone? Not, we do have a motion on the floor. I'll go back to the mover for final comment.
Uh, no, I think I've talked enough.
Okay. And we have the recommendation, we have the, we're sorry, we have the motion on the floor right now. And I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Opposed? And I'm sorry, both, I, I, I'm so sorry to call you out, but both councillor Biderick and councillor Gordon, you're, you're sitting at such an angle, I did not see a hand. Councillor Gordon, you're opposed? Councillor Biderick, I didn't see a hand.
I didn't vote either way because I think we should talk this out and it's just wasting our time by voting. Honestly, sorry, I had to say that.
Fair, fair enough. Right? And then the motion is lost. And do I have an alternate motion? Councillor Porter, go ahead.
I'm moved to receive this report and for committee to, um, review all the comments that were put forward tonight and, um, bring it back to council with, um, some suggested ways of dealing with the comments heard tonight.
Before I accept the motion, I have to go to staff. Staff, do we have a clear list of comments that we can, uh, forward with that motion? I'm not sure who to address that to, likely to the clerk.
Your, uh, the, uh, meeting is recorded so we can go through and make sure all those, uh, points have been highlighted into a, into a form or a short, um, a short list, uh, to present to the committee.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, that, that meets the needs of your motion? Okay, thank you. Then I will look for a second or for the motion. Councillor Parks, councillor Porter, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, it's just, you, you, you know, you made some very good points. The mayor made, made some very valued comments in regards to some of the, and the name, um, I, I, I agree with him. It, it, it does lend to confusion and some of the names you're using. So I'd like to see that addressed or at least made some suggestion or, or rationale. Um, councillor Parks also made some very valid points. I'd like to see, um, some comment back from the committee uh, to, uh, to the points that she made as far as, um, as, as far as, you know, um, the flexibility. And I guess that's, that's what, that in my mind, the policy should be as flexible as possible so that council can make decisions based on, uh, uh, individual applications and not say that this amount of money has to go to this specific area for this specific amount of time. Now, I know we have to do it with the solar project because we agreed to that in a, in a legal agreement. But, um, and that's not to say that, that Amherst view, Amherst Island will get, um, exactly what, what's in the policy or what's being proposed in the policy. But I think tying hands and, and negating flexibility is always a dangerous thing. And, uh, that's something that should be considered by, by the, uh, by the committee. And I'd like to see that, uh, considered as well as the other comments, uh, from tonight.
Thank you. Uh, second or councillor Parks, would you like to make comment?
Just to say, I support exactly, uh, what councillor Porter has mentioned. I think the flexibility is needed in there, um, to ensure that the township as a whole can capitalize on, on whatever, uh, applications come before them.
Thank you. Other comments? Councillor Tannen, go ahead.
Won't be supporting the motion. Um, part of that, uh, part of the reasoning I have, uh, was very well articulated by the deputy mayor earlier in so far as, um, you know, the committee has come back um, with these recommendations with this policy. It's done a tremendous amount of work. It's been so long uh, in the making. In my mind, this motion is yet again another smoke screen to try and ensure that uh, Amherst Island is robbed of a just and fair share of what it deserves. So I won't support it.
Thank you. Other comments? Deputy, go ahead.
Could I ask for clarity on the motion? And specifically, um, the funding, the equivalent of the five years, equivalent of first five years of funding to be spent on air, on projects on Amherst Island over the life of the funding. I'm just not sure how to become more flexible than that. So is it, is it that that's too much money to be spent? On the island or is it that, the way it's spent? And I'm just looking at it. I'm not sure where the committee, how to, how the committee can. I want to make sure we're going in the right direction. I'm not sure if we can. I just want to make sure.
Councillor Porter, do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I just, um, first of all, what, what I would like to say is that I find that in the, the policy itself. Um, and I'm, I'm going to try and find it here. Anyway, I, I can scroll through. I'm not going to be able to find it, but, but it, it leads one to believe that, that the funding of twenty five percent. I can't find it, but, but it, when I read it, it led me to believe that it was a legally binding within the agreement between the Loyalist Township and Wind electric. When I first read that, and it was only through clarification through this meeting that it was, shall not be. Well, that, that was one thing that, that I would comment on. Um, as far as your, your question, uh, Jim, could the committee not give us, um, uh, options, some scenarios uh, of how we could look at this in, in a variety of different ways?
And, well, question from the deputy mayor, it's an answer from councillor Porter.
I'm sorry, you broke up. I didn't hear you.
Go ahead, deputy.
No, I, I, whether the committee can come back with, with other options, that would be up to the committee members. My, I guess my thought is I'm not going to support the motion the way it stands at this point. From the clarity that I can see, the committee came back with a mo, with a recommendation. They were told to reconsider it. They did. They came up with this. We, and the committee's thoughts were that it was flexible because we weren't saying the first five, the first five years worth of funding has to be spent on Amherst Island. We were just saying this allotment we, will be spent on Amherst Island over the life of the funding. Um, so if, that way, if, if we didn't want to tie the hands that when the applications came in, automatically everything had to go to Amherst Island right at the very start, just to burn up five years worth of money. We want it to be used wisely. So the funding will be there. But that means that all the rest of the funding is open to the whole township. And if at the end of the project, there aren't enough projects on Amherst Island to use that five years worth of funding, then that's another option. That money would be there in the basically earmarked, but not used. There's going to be a pot of money after this project ceases to be able to be reviewed on how it's going to be spent. And that whole process could be looked at at that time too. So I, we tried to build as much flexibility into it as we could, while still ensuring that the same as a solar project, the most impacted areas were recognized. And so, and with the, with the amount of land and the amount of projects that the township is looking at right now on Amherst Island, it's quite feasible that the money could be well invested and not just spent on Amherst Island. So I'm not going to support the motion as it stands. As far as the rest of it, uh, minor name changes and stuff like that, we, I mean, there again, like I said, I'm trying to get a good launching point so we can start getting applications.
And just to clarify, um, your comments, Jim, um, so it says, I found the paragraph, it says, from the community benefit agreement with Wind Electric Inc. So that quotation almost makes it sound like it, it, the, the next few words are actually from the legal agreement. Where it says the equivalent value of the first five years of funds received over a twenty five year period shall be used for community betterment purposes on Amherst Island until the equivalent of the first five year allotment is used. Until the equivalent of the first five year allotment is used. So does that mean it's going to tie our hands as council that we have to approve? Certain product because we have to spend the money there. Like that's what I worry about. Like you're going to get applications. We're going to get close to. And, you know, maybe the twenty year period and, and if all the money is not spent or hands are tied by this policy, we have to approve. The applications because the money's not spent yet. So that, that's where, that's where I, it's a little bit worrisome as well.
I'm not sure I understand the concern. I'm sorry.
Well, councillor, do you want to clarify again?
Yes, like with any kind of mandated expenditure. If you have to spend a certain amount of money, you can't decline applications because you have to spend the money. So regardless of the merit of the application, you have to approve it because you have to. Spend the money.
It froze a little bit at the end, but I believe we got the gist of your, of your statement. Other comments? Councillor Parks?
Just to follow up on councillor Porter's point, my, part of my concern is that if there are. Opportunities that come available in other areas of the township. If those funds are earmarked for Amherst Island, we're not necessarily going to have access to them to fund those other programs. So, or those other opportunities or grants or applications that come through, um, because the money will probably be earmarked for Amherst Island.
Thank you for your comment. Deputy, go ahead.
If I may just speak to that, um, seventy-five percent of the funds will be available anyway. Because it would only be the twenty-five percent which would be. Dedicated or not dedicated, but as you say earmarked for potential projects on Amherst Island. So seventy-five percent of the funding. Is open to everyone. And. It won't be to burn through money on Amherst Island. It will be that if, if an application came in that did not meet the requirements and was not justified. It doesn't have to be approved just because there's money earmarked for Amherst Island. It's, it, and that's where with it being over the life of the, of the project over twenty years. That's where the money would be earmarked for.
Councillor Parks, go ahead.
So just to follow up on the deputy's comments, could the language not be changed then to say that, um. Yeah, the priority would be to amount or to cover Amherst Island as opposed to earmarking a certain amount. As a suggestion or an option.
So you're, so not have, not have any restrictions and just earmark. That they have priority on all through the whole twenty years?
Well, I'm just saying that i- if it comes down to the concern of what the residents. Were subjected to and as, um. To help heal that wound, um. Then maybe there needs to be some language as opposed to studying a certain dollar value that, okay, for, um, this many years or. Sorry, I'm not articulating this very well, um. That. The priority would be given to Amherst Island to a certain amount every year or something like that, as opposed to putting in an actual dollar value.
Is suggesting, um, possibly ranking the applications higher. I think if, if I'm interpreting what you're saying, councillor Parks, r- ranking the applications from the island higher, uh, based on. Whatever that criteria is, uh, for the application process. And, and I'm, I'm not supporting or, or, or discrediting. I'm just hoping to clarify your, your, your suggestion there. Okay, thank you councillor Parks. Deputy, go ahead.
I know there's a motion on the floor and the committee, the whole, I don't want to be out of order too far. Can I comment to that then with what went on in the committee with the thought process or am I out of too far out of order?
I'm sure I'm giving the clerk headaches right now, but, uh, again, as commented by councillor Bidrick earlier. Committee, the whole is supposed to be for, for as much discussion as possible, uh, to come to the best answer. So yes, please go ahead, deputy.
Okay, and I'm just trying, that way. I guess that's what I saw my role tonight is more to provide a little bit of thought process rather than argue the final outcome. So that everybody can understand. The people on the committee know what, what it, we've said in the committee, the others don't. So I'm, that's where I'm looking at. So we did actually discuss that. Um, the committee did where we would use almost like a ranked ballot, a ranked application, um. And in the discussions, um. If we leave it that there's, that the, it's ranked higher, if it's within a certain geographical area and just leave it at that. Then in reality, a hundred percent of the funds could end up going there. Because if, if, if we receive, if the township receives five applications throughout the township. And they're all justified and, um. Would be eligible for funding every single time the one with the ranked. Uh, marking would win. So that's where we looked at it and said, you know, if we just, if we, instead of doing it that way and adding more. More of an argumentative, uh, point. Let's just set the parameters and say, this is where we're going to try to go. And we thought that, um. Actually, we thought that it would be more, um, palatable from both sides this way, um, than going with. Like a ranked ballot type of thing. But maybe we're wrong.
Thank you, deputy councillor Bidrick, go ahead.
On, on that though, deputy mayor, um, what I was thinking though is, is, is as a committee, they will. Possibly rank it as it is and you could say geographically could have preferences, but in the end. It still has to come to council to get voted on whether that gets approved or not. So there is over and above a check and a balance to that.
Thank you. Other comments? And further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor and a motion, I'm not going to try to summarize it, but it. Asked that this policy be brought back to the committee, uh, with the points of discussion. And the clerk has, has the details of our discussion this evening. And if anyone have further points to discuss on this? Councillor Bidrick, go ahead.
I may have missed it or not, but when they talked about two different dates, have we actually set possible dates for when applications are due? Um, being, uh, specific hard dates. Um, I didn't see them in the, uh, the actual, uh. Report.
Um, I'll go to the deputy.
In the policies, in the policy, it stipulates the dates. Um, there's one for the first of the year and one for the middle of the year.
Sure, but it actually says January one and June.
It states when the applications would be open and when they would, when it would close.
Yeah, uh, just reading the policy six point three, with the exception of the first year. Applications for first funding period will be available the first Monday of the month. Uh, January and applications will be due no later than February first same year. And applications for the second period would be the first Monday of the month of May and do no later than June of the same year. So they have hardcoded some application periods into the policy. After the first year. Any other discussion points? If we have no further discussion, I will call the question. And I believe I have to go back to mover first. That would be councillor Porter. Nothing further? Thank you. Then I will call the question on the motion at hand. All those in favor, please show your hand. Those opposed? Motion is lost. And do we have any further motions? I'll go to councillor, I'll go to the deputy.
A motion to receive the report and, uh. Have the, have the committee review and I, I. Maybe I shouldn't have started this because I can't remember what all the points were, but, um. I'm thinking of the points like the name changes and things like that, um. The minor revisions to be reviewed by the committee. And by minor, it'd be like the name changes and some clarifying, clarification and my, and name changes.
And if I can, uh. Uh, hopefully try to summarize or provide clarity to your motion. I'm not trying to, to speak to your motion. Uh, but can I assume that the bulk of what you're looking for is that, uh, item three point. Two. Not be included in the list of discussion points for the committee. Three point two being the question of the allocation to the island.
Correct.
Correct. The, the, the other details are what you're suggesting goes back to the committee.
Yes.
Thank you. And so I'll take that as a motion and does the clerk have clarity on the motion? Thank you. Do we have a second or for the motion? Councillor Townend, mover comments?
The, the, the clarity in the, in the, the title, um, again, I see that as a clarity thing, um, with the, the heading. Um, we can try to come up with something different that, that suits it better. Um, so. I don't have an issue with that and then we can keep moving forward.
Thank you. Deputy, a second or? Nothing? Other comments? Councillor Parks, go ahead.
Just a question for clarity. So you're saying leaving in three point two and three point three of the policy, which is to do with the. The equivalency value.
And the allocations to the specis, the specified areas is my understanding of the intent of the motion, yes.
Yes, I won't be supporting that.
And other comments? Anyone? Back to the mover. And then I once again will call the question. All those in favor, please show a hand. Opposed? Motion is lost. Do I have further discussion, further motion? Councillor Bidrick, go ahead.
Um, it, it's obviously, we're not getting to a spot here and, and why, I guess, uh, I'm not necessarily supporting it in. And looking forward, um, if you do look at the agenda for the first application, which I think is a great idea. Um, it, because it's possible. However, uh, the funding of it, if for the meeting on Thursday night. For the first application for finances, um, I don't see where. There's going to be a sustainable amount of money outside of what we would be giving them through the vibrancy fund to sustain that project. Um, building it and, and having it operate. And I just feel that it'll come to a point where. We will be pulling more money out of this fund to fund that than, uh, we need to, unfortunately.
Thank you. Other comments? I'll be honest, I have not yet read the agenda for the vibrancy committee on Thursday. Anyone? I'll go to the clerk.
Yeah, so, so the meeting on Thursday, your worship is going to talk about, uh, additional documents attachments to the policy. So, um, it may be premature to, to say that, you know, the, the policy as a whole. Is, is supported or approved, uh, through, through here, uh, until you have the full sum policy because the. Thing that's going through on Thursday as well is going to talk about the, the reporting out. Um, you know, uh, memorandums of understanding those types of things which may provide. A bit more clarity to, to council members, uh, for some of the items that were talked about. Uh, it doesn't speak to the two items that, um, you know, seem, seem to be high on the list, but again, those comments. Uh, I'm sure would be, um, you know, heard at the committee or through the members, um, for further discussion if they so wished.
And if I may ask, madam clerk, um, when are we looking at having a final policy? Completed all the work done for the application process, everything like that, uh, when are we looking at, at potentially having that before council?
So your worship, the meeting on Thursday, I believe, was just to finalize that depending on where they get to, at that point, uh, it would. Come back, I would suggest come back to a, uh, committee of the whole meeting just because of the, uh, discussion that usually generates. Uh, which would be in, uh, the first meeting in May, uh, and then it would go again, whether everything is, is, um. Okay, then it would go on to council after that.
Thank you. Members of council, further discussion? As noted, we have, go ahead councillor Porter.
I do have a motion based on the suggestion from the clerk then, uh, just move to receive the report. Bring it back to committee, the whole with the entire package, um, with the, uh. What was it you said had to come back? The memorandum and the application and all that stuff and, and, uh. Just bring it back to me a whole again for further discussion. And I mean, and I have to say, I like councillor Boudrick's idea that it needs to go on the table. We need to have a full and fruitful discussion.
Thank you. I'll accept that motion. The clerk has clarity on the motion is, do I have a second or for that motion? Councillor Boudrick, mover comment?
Uh, no, I think it's pretty clear. We're not getting anywhere too quickly tonight. So I think, uh, bringing it back. Let everybody have some time to reflect and think about some of the things that have been said tonight and then bring it back again.
Thank you, councillor Boudrick.
Um, not only take the time to reflect, uh, in, in say two, the, two, two-ish weeks to think about what we talked about tonight. But also we've got this agenda before a long weekend and we were put into a lockdown. So we haven't really had a whole lot of time. To see any of our constituents about this. Um, I think a couple of weeks of breathing will give us some more input from, uh. The people within our community that we represent.
Thank you. Other comments? I see no other comments. Back to mover for final. Then I will call the question. All those in favor, please show a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. And. If there's nothing further for the agenda, I believe that was the end of four point one. We go to a motion for adjournment. And I'll take councillor Parks and councillor Boudrick. Thank you. Any comments? I'll call the question on the motion for adjournment. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good week.